Start. Anybody that has public comments outside of the public hearing, there's a sign up sheet in the back. So let's move on to approve today's agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Seconded any discussion.
Hey none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries next is approval minutes of April seventeenth.
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes of April seventeenth twenty twenty-three as presented.
I will second.
It's been moved and seconded any discussion. Right now, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries next is approval claims for payment of April twenty-fourth twenty-third.
We'll make a motion to approve.
No, second that.
It's been moved and seconded any discussion. Very none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Boy. We got two minutes yet. I don't want to go to some of the current. Taylor, let's do the resolution for bridge weight one.
I have to ask you that for you too, but this is just kind of our annual thing from the company which they have come in special bridges. Some of them we had a choice on, so a lot of them I made of one truck at a time, which I'm not really trying to joke, but still what you legally have to do. And there's some of them I may, you know, the opposite, like they're six ton bridges now and stuff like that, you know, kind of depend on the situation, so. It is what it is, so. I don't know if you got any questions?
We opened it up for the state, they did that ninety thousand, if people want to pay that specialized since all these bridges would reflect to that as well.
Yes, but it still has not been all over bridges either, they look at about half of our bridges every, you have to look at them every two years.
Right.
So the ones that aren't looked at this year will be looked at next year, then it will be up today.
Okay.
Lance said make a motion to approve the resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirteen bridge weight limit postings as presented.
And I will second.
It's been moved and seconded any discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Lance.
Aye.
Renee.
Aye.
DJ.
Aye. Motion carries. I got nine oh three, so I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. To approve the fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four budget. Is there anybody that like to speak? Connor, you want to come on up?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, I just have a couple of things I'm curious about. Roads and transportation. Uh, the increase from two years ago is a hundred and ten percent. The increase from last year is forty-eight percent. Four and a half million dollars. Now, I know a building burned down, you had to replace it, six hundred and seventy-five thousand is what it was listed at. But that's close to four million dollars, and I was wondering, why such huge increases?
Taylor.
Oh, we're also building another building here in Aladora.
Four million dollars to build another building?
Three point five.
How, also also explain how the tax dollars were.
Oh, I roll over, yeah, so this is not, that's not money you're taxed, I have a carryover of six point seven million, so it's being coming out of that.
Okay.
Yeah, so it won't increase the taxes.
So then this, uh, thirteen and a half million dollars is, that that rollover is part of it, or has it?
It should be in there, yeah, that's it.
Okay.
Yeah, they, the supervisors cannot raise road taxes that is set by the state. And, yeah, we're, we've always been capped, and the only way for us to do things like this is to save money over the years, and the only way you can do that is by not putting money into the roads every year.
Okay.
And some of that was FEMA money that came back through.
Two point two million was from FEMA, yes.
Okay. Okay, like I said, I was, I did try to look on, on the website to find any information.
Yep.
And couldn't.
I think we just mentioned it, we talked about it at one meeting, it is in the paper, I don't remember, but.
But I was looking for a spreadsheet.
I understand.
Um, as everybody knows, population in Harden County is declining. The most recent figures I could find for poverty rate said that poverty in Harden County is nine point six percent. With the median earning annually at forty-one thousand. Um, administration over the last two years have, has increased almost a million and a half, and I know that there are some of those funds because of inflation. And I will still state, in my opinion, a lot of, a lot of inflation is corporate greed. Uh, with a half a million increase in just the last year. But last year, the pay increases for elected officials was six percent. This year up to ten, sixteen percent in the last two years. Uh, and last year it was going to be eight, but you decided to stick with social security increases of six. That was appreciated. This year, only two positions stayed at the same rate of pay increase as social security, Michelle and Dave, I appreciate that, with this round for Daryl being zero. Uh, thank you all. But I think ten percent pay increase, considering the poverty rate and the median earning, is a bit much, quite a bit much. Way too much. And that's all I'm going to say about that. Um, levy increases being part of the budget. Alden School Board increased their levy and specified it at thirty cents per thousand evaluation. Iowa Falls School Board raised their levy and specified it for people at twenty-four cents per thousand of valuation. Yeah. Iowa Falls City Council raised their levy and specified it at thirty cents per thousand of valuation. And I've asked multiple times and received no answer regarding the two levy increases for the county. Now, the general and the rural increases do not change throughout the township. This one, this township doesn't pay more, while that one pays less, it's general and across the board. And I really think that that is a reasonable answer, especially for people on fixed income who have to plan this out. Who have to figure, how am I going to budget these increases? Do I have to take money out of my retirement account to pay for these increases? And while I realize that the state levies, et cetera, et cetera, will not be out until August or September, this one at least is known. And it, if school boards and city councils can figure it out, I would certainly hope that the county could do. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody on fine? They have the ability on mute.
They should be on mute themselves now.
This is a public hearing, if any public would like to speak.
Anybody else out here? I can entertain closing public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Lance.
Aye.
Renee.
Aye.
DJ.
Aye. Bush carries. Next, we have is the discussion possible action on the comp board recommendations. Can entertain.
Well, I want to, with the comp board recommendations. This is what is recommended, and the rules in guidance with Iowa code on how they can be adjusted. Limit you quite a bit by what you can do, but they also have implications down the line, so the example I use is anything that, when you have a chief deputy, and I'll use Sheriff McDaniel since an example, that the chief deputy JD, his wages would be limited by the amount that the sheriff is making. And so we have to keep that in mind as well, and I know that the comp board, when they met, they took that into consideration as well, and then the, one of the other variables is the back the blue bill. So those are the, the things that the compensation board looks at, along with the data set provided by ISAC and by Mike Galloway from Iowa to Cooney, this, in this time it was Ann Smisha. And what James Naring provided. So we, these weren't numbers that were thrown against the wall to see what would stick, these are what is comparable for both like-sized counties, like-sized valuations. Numerous factors.
Like-sized income?
Potentially.
Actual.
So those are my opening comments.
Along with this, if anything is cut, it has to be cut by percent evenly across the board. And working with this, I've talked to the sheriff on how that could affect his chief deputy as well, and compared to how the union negotiations went, along with trying to keep the chief deputy up above.
A road deputy.
The road deputies out there because they're not allowed to collect time and a half overtime.
Right.
By being the chief deputy. So it's, it's a tough one, because I don't like the way the state has this designed at all. You can't pick one, you can't choose two, it, it's all or none, and I, when they throw the back the blue in there, it really messes us up. But whether you want the full percent or not, it, I can't change or alter, that's what the comp board does.
Right. And I'll add one other item, the compensation board, we have altered, manipulated, cut, done everything and anything to their recommendations last several years, to the point where it's discouraging for them to take time out of their schedules to even come in, do the work, and then to have us eviscerated one way or another.
And even by lowering any of these numbers, they're just going to keep adding the numbers on the followers.
Right.
Right. And I agree, I mean, I, I don't want to cut, because I don't want to cut the sheriff, I know there's issues getting deputies, keeping deputies, and it's the trickle-down effect, and I just don't want to lose any more employees in that department.
Lance, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to honor the wishes of the compensation board and make a motion to adopt the compensation board recommendations as presented.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded any discussion.
I just want to make sure that people understand who the compensation board is comprised of, so they understand who's making, listening to this and making recommendations, so Wendy Bradley, Justin Weber, Robert Harms, Jeremiah Andrews, Ben Koller, and Dave Sweeney.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call. Aye.
Renee.
Aye.
DJ.
Aye. Motion carries. Now it's a fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four budget, we can go ahead and adopt, approve the budget.
Lance, I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four county budget.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded any discussion, next year Donna brought the point where she wants the cents per thousand. So let's have that on there for next year.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
I think that will actually come out in what's being proposed by the Iowa House in the truth and taxation part of the proposed legislation. That I think when they mesh the two, the Senate and the House bills, the truth and taxation will lay that out. So I really like that proposal, and so it shouldn't be an issue going forward.
Here the discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Lance.
Aye.
Renee.
Aye.
DJ.
Aye. Motion carries, next we have is Summit Carbon Solutions Project update, Kaylee Langrell.
To one second.
Nope, I'm sorry, I missed that consideration to approve the resolution twenty-three twelve resolution to adopt.
I'll make a motion to approve the adoption of the fiscal year twenty-four budget resolution.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded any discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Lance.
Aye.
Renee.
Aye.
DJ.
Aye. Motion carries, now I have Summit Carbon.
Good morning.
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 How are y'all doing?
Good, thank you.
Good. Everyone. Oh, you guys already have?
We got them.
Okay. Does anybody else want one? Okay, so I'll start by agreeing to this myself, it's been a little bit since I've been here, I think Derek Montgomery was here in my place last time. Um, so my name is Kaylee Langrell, I work for Turnkey Logistics, we represent Summit Carbon Solutions in mostly the non-environmental permitting. Uh, so we're across the permits, drainage, stuff like that, so I know you guys have been working with, uh, Bill Sullivan um, on a couple of those things, so really my plan here today is just to give you guys an update on the project, and then go over, I'll kind of just explain this handout that's on top right here. And then we can answer any questions you guys have, I also have Grant Terry here with me, he's one of the Iowa project managers, so he'll be helpful in answering some of those questions as well. So I'll start with an update, as far as land acquisition, in December when we were here, we were at thirty-four percent voluntary easement miles acquired.
In the summer of in Iowa?
That's for Harden County.
Okay, thank you.
And as of last week, we are at fifty-two percent. So that's a pretty good jump in the last few months, we're happy with that, obviously we want to, we want to continue growing that number. Um, as far as the state number, we are at sixty-eight percent of easement miles acquired, and that's as of last week as well. Um, and I know you guys, like I said, have been working with Bill on drainage, so we are working on the drainage applications and agreements, and those should be ready within the next two weeks for us to submit to you. I say two weeks, two or so weeks, you never know with the review process. But just wanted to give you an update there. And then as far as the new property taxes, I think we talked about this the first time I was here, but I did want to bring that number up again, it is an estimated number. We use a third party or incentive to come up with this number, and it's based on the costs and operations of the project. And that is a little over two million dollars annually. So that's really all I have for updates, as far as this handout, I'm not going to go over it one by one, but I did kind of want to explain how it's laid out, so you guys can look at it yourself. What it's talking about mostly, number one through seven, is Feds of Regulations, so we've laid out the specific regulation. And these are just a few examples, obviously Feds of one ninety-five is, is huge, so there's tons of regulations, but we did want to lay out a couple of them for you to look at. Um, so you see the specific code, for example, one ninety-five point one twelve, and then it gives the language, and then what Summit Carbon Solutions is doing to address that regulation. Um, so with that, do you guys have any questions for us today?
Did you guys have any?
I don't. Add some questions that somebody wanted me to ask here. Uh, who owns the pipeline, and who owns the CO2 in the pipeline?
So I think, I mean, Grant, it's more, that's on the commercial side of things, I'm not, neither of us, he's engineering, I'm obviously not environmental permitting.
I mean, we own the pipeline, and it's Summit Carbon Solutions, we're gonna operate the line, but what she mentioned as far as with the CO2, that is a commercial question, I'm not part of the corporation, unfortunately.
Okay. Insurance, if the farmer accidentally causes a leak, whose insurance covers it?
Yeah, that's a great question, um, so there is an indemnification clause in every easement, so Summit Carbon Solutions, since we own the pipeline, we would be responsible for that incident, so if you're going about your regular day, and your tractor hits the pipeline, something happens, that's on us, the only time that Summit Carbon Solutions would not be liable is if you intentionally struck the line with something.
Okay. If road crews hit the line, who's at fault?
If road crews, I mean, if they're operating on the line, I mean, it would be typically, they would be required to follow the eight-one-one, essentially called for your dig, and be part of that system. They're out operating in the road right, road right away, and they did make their necessary eight-one-one call, we would have an operator out present to witness that. I would say that, you know, it would be unfortunate if a road crew were to strike the line and cause any kind of damage that would result in any kind of damage, you know, outside of the redway, but I mean, ultimately, if they made their eight-one-one and still struck the line, then it would be, uh, someone, I mean, you're sitting there watching it, so.
Correct. Okay. How much water and electricity will this process use?
Um, that's mainly going to be on the capture side, as far as like the ongoing, uh, water use associated with the condensing of the CO2 and dehydration, um, on the pipeline side, we're really only going to utilize the water to hydro test the line, in which case it would be, we look at section it off like twenty-five to thirty miles per test, so have twenty-five or thirty miles of, of water in the pipe, we test that section, push the water. So you calculate it out that way. But I mean, the, the biggest use of water is going to be on the capture side, and I don't have those figures, I could certainly get them for you.
Okay.
Well, what happens?
Oh, Julie, 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 no, Julie, Julie, no.
And some.
No.
Yeah, okay, I'll ask later.
Thank you. What happens with the wastewater?
As far as from like the, the hydro test, or from the capture side?
In general?
Um, again, if it's wastewater on the capture side, I'd have to get that answer for you, as far as with the, the hydro test, after the water's been pushed, we would have discharge permits, and we would dispose of the water as, as required.
Okay.
She missed the electricity part with the water.
And what about the electricity?
As far as the requirement at the actual capture facility, the total requirement, again, I, that's on the capture side, I don't have those figures.
Okay. How much noise would the capture equipment make?
Um, capture equipment, I mean, it's not, again, a lot of capture questions today, um, I can get you that figure, um, I can speak to the pump stations. If you're looking at a, with the horizontal H pumps that we're going to have present at these facilities, where we do have a pump station, a lot of questions come up. Okay, you're going to have a big pump station, you know, a couple acres, it's going to be incredibly loud. The way, uh, the way to think about that is a typical AC unit makes approximately sixty to eighty decibels of sound output. Now, what, one of these pumps is going to be operating at maximum capacity, so we were pumping the max capacity in the area that we were able to, to pump with that H pump, it'd be producing eighty decibels of sound. And these pumps are going to be contained in a sound insulated building as well, so you're thinking, if it was just sitting out in the open, it'd be producing the same amount of sound, or decibels of sound as safe an AC unit top end, and then we're insulating on top of that, so.
Capture.
Okay. With the capture equipment, is that the question?
Yeah. We can get, I, I'm very sorry, we'll get the answers to the capture facility questions, it's just, I'll kind of explain why we don't have those right now. With a project this size, we have a special person that is, or a team that's focused on capture facilities, unfortunately, you know, Grant is on the pipeline side, I'm not on capture, I'm just on permitting, but we will get those answers for you.
Okay, how many, how many valves in pumping stations in Harden County?
Um, see here, I do, I did provide a map in here, so, um, looks like we have two, three, four, looks like there's going to be about four valves.
There's the red ribbons on them.
Yes. In Harden County.
How many pumping stations?
Zero. That would be the pump station, if there was a pump station in the county, you would see it with a little green, uh, square, so there's one.
Okay.
Yeah, so for the initial case that we were looking at, for all two thousand miles of pipe across all five states, we're looking at probably a top end of around sixteen pump stations, so sixteen, not sixty. So I mean, they're, they're spread pretty far, uh, as far as between the pump stations, we'll be utilizing the, the pumping and compression at the actual capture sites, as opposed to employing more pump stations.
Okay. Will you pay for continual more than the first year of training for EMS?
So like that's the ultimate, the ultimate plan is going to come from Rod Dylan, he's our very clear compliance manager director of regulatory compliance, and he's actually going to be the one that's setting the, the path forward for the training of all of the EMS and first responders and police forces in each of the different affected counties. I've been at a meeting where he's mentioned that yes, um, so say they did an initial training for, you know, those different groups, and then after five years, uh, I'd say, but good percentage or a certain percentage of those have been replaced with new employees, there would be a, a program set in place for retrain.
Okay.
But again, that, that plan is ultimately going to be his responsibility.
How much CO2 will the survey plant put in there?
Plains.
Plains, I'm sorry.
Because I think in other countries, you've mentioned that you're flying over every two weeks.
Let's just leave me a question.
Yeah.
So as far as the, the plane flying, I have no idea, I mean, we are required by federal regulation to conduct twenty-six flyovers of the line, and I mean, those are, those are safety flyovers, those are required to, you know, check the integrity of the ground above the, above the, the pipeline easement, that's annually, that's annually twenty-six flights.
Those were the questions I had, thank you.
All right.
Any other questions?
No, thanks.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have is consideration for Shonda Kite as authorized representative for employee's benefit system and all other county insurances.
And make the motion to approve Shonda Kite as the authorized representative for the employee benefit system and other county insurances.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded any discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries, next is implement employment agreement executive assistance of board supervisors.
I will make a motion to approve the employment agreement, um, between Harden County and the board supervisors. And also Anne Larson for the executive assistant to the board duties.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded any discussion. This person will take over the post of the drainage and the board secretary, whoever else we put on it, coming out of the auditor's office. Hopefully it'll work better, so the auditors okay that with us, and our HR has put all this together. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, consideration to approve the BPTC abatement.
Make a motion to approve the business property tax credit abatement for it's an order number six one one one. We did before twenty-four twenty-three. Just did not, credit did not upload to state, needs to be put back on for one one twenty-one, and refund the overpayment.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, or a second, the nation's motion.
It's been moved and seconded any discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, next is change the status. Motion carries, next is change the status.
Lance, I'll make a motion to approve the resignation of Ann Larson from the treasurer's office effective four twenty-four, twenty-three.
I will second it.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? Very none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. I have Dave Corcoran on here, I've done this performance review with him, it was not a group, this is. And talking with HR, this is a recommendation, if you guys so wish, sixty-two thousand a year with the, with the vehicle.
Lance, I'd make a motion to approve the change of status for David Corcoran. At a salary of sixty-two thousand dollars a year with the addition of the use of the county vehicle.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Very none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Got more changes.
You got the. On Sarah Hawkins', is this a termination, okay, termination of Sarah Hawkins' as a correctional officer.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? April nineteenth. Hearing any others? Motion carries. Motion carries.
Next, I make the rest, uh, make a motion to approve the resignation Hannah Metz, communications dispatcher. Effective April twenty-first, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Very none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Last one I have for the sheriff's office is termination of Ian Showers. Effective April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three as correctional officer.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Very none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Then, uh, change status in conservation department, Brett Lawrence, park technician, sixteen dollars an hour. Effective April seventeenth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Very none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Other business, when it came to the. Our assistant, did we have a start date on that?
I don't know, we don't have a start, there's no start date, so again, there's. May first.
So May second.
I was just told May first, so her last day would be.
She told me her last day was May first.
Okay.
Okay, so May second person.
So I'll make a motion to approve the start date for the executive assistant to the board as May first, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
May second. All right, yes, May second.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Very none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries.
No, sir.
Nothing.
I will move to public comment, if you got a list up there, Julie.
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 If I question two of the summit, how many bodies of water, streams, rivers, et cetera? Will that, uh, all those pipelines go under? A lot, and who will be, um, taking care of that? And what happens if the pipeline should leak into the water? What happens then? I don't know, you'll have to ask him, but moving on. Why would Bruce Rastetter care about a farmer's land he obtains by eminent domain? When we know he doesn't care about the environment and our water quality? Some farmers, some farmers. Um, treasure their agricultural heritage, as you well know. And for some of those farmers, it's not for sale. I know you've approved the compensation board raises, but when I consult with a county office. Um, with a question, and I don't receive the answer in four weeks. And then I have to consult the state office for that information. And I get what I needed in less than three hours. We have a problem, so you might want to address that, thank you.
Thank you. That was the only public comment.
Good morning, Carrie.
Morning, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm pissed off. I own Wicker Security and we sit at the door. And I understand a lot of you are unhappy with the policies that we have in place currently about entry into the courthouse. And I'm okay to disagree on that, but I am not okay when many of you who attend these meetings are disrespectful. To the guards who sit at the door. We are executing a policy, if you have a question or a concern with the policy, please refer to your supervisors. From this point forward, it's done. We are qualified professionals executing an assignment. We do not need to be disrespected, we are not trying to infringe on anyone's constitutional rights, we are not trying to prevent you from being in here. We have a job, when we ask a simple question like where are you headed? And you say the supervisor's meeting, I guarantee you, you will be allowed to pass without any further infringement. But any more of this disrespectful, ignoring, rim commentary. Inflation of an issue that doesn't exist, we have bigger and better fish to fry than whether or not you can walk by my guard at the door. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
I just want to say something with the security, I'm very happy that we have this policy. It, it is just night and day difference from what we have before. And when we have issues in the office, they're there to help us, and they're there to prevent things that might happen. And so I'm very thankful for our security that we have at Harden County.
I am too, and I guess one of the, the issues that I, that really made me decide this is what we needed was. When we've met with judges in the past, and they're talking about the possibility of someday combining, combining court systems and courthouses and whatever. Um, we just happened to be in the process of doing our remodel and adding on the vestibule. So that's when we decided to go to one entry into the courthouse for security purposes. And this is something, like I said, that the judges have been asking for. And, um, we want to keep those court services in our county. Because if you don't have those court services in your county, you're going to be one of the first ones to probably go when the state decides to start combining courthouses.
Which would increase our expenses.
Exactly, and so there would be a lot of services there that we would not have any longer. And we think it's bad now, the dwindling of population and services in our county. It, it'll be worse if we don't have a, if we don't have a courthouse. So this is something that, um, there was just no doubt in my mind that I was going to be in support of having. One entry to the courthouse with security. And we're, we're light years ahead of a lot of other courthouses in this state. So I will defend security to the nth degree in what they're doing and how, and the services they provide for us.
Can I make a comment? I'm going to second my name. Uh, Ringel County had a situation this year, because everybody's all up in arms over Suss value increases. Which, um, I mean, they couldn't be helped, it's, it's all market driven, as I've said in the papers. And people aren't, aren't happy about it, but there was a day when there was a guy who came. He was talking to Denise and his arms were flying, and Carrie came up, she saw they can't hear. But she could see his movements, and she came up and stood. And, um, he turns around and kind of made a smart alecky comment, oh, his blue shoes here for me. Well, unbeknownst to Denise and I, she, she was there for us because she saw his movements. And Denise was quick and she said, no, I need her to sign a paper for me. And he left. There'd been two guys, there was another guy, in fact, I called Dave to make sure that him or JD were handy. Because I was worried, this guy called and said he was coming in and didn't need him, thank goodness. But, uh, Ringel County had a situation where they had a guy who had come in. Uh, they knew he was coming in, they've had problems with him in the past. And they ended up calling security, they took him down and he was arrested because he was threatening the two office staff in Ringel County. So I'm thankful we have our security at the door, and there's no reason for anybody to be disrespectful to them, they're doing their job. So. That's all I can say.
Thanks, Johnny.
From there, I can ask for German.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? Very none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.